Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We'll see you proud again. All the meeting to order. We'll need to add in him to be a gentleman.
Maybe.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All okay. Prove the minutes, there is a late.
Red Bull, red Bull sets of minutes, we have one from the special property tax levy meeting. And that may look fine, Chris did a nice job of putting that together. And then our regular board meeting from that same day, from April eighth last week. Everything also looks to be in order. I make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All okay. General public concern. Everybody doing anything, it just what's on the agenda? Then you can call. Medical examiner.
Well, Dr. Paul, I've been here for four years, working at the clinic, and then a medical examiner for the last year and a half. I had a couple things that I wanted to do, talk about, so thanks for getting me on the agenda. First, and hopefully the easier conversation is appointing Kenny Borland as medical examiner investigator, and a few budget concerns. So Kenny has been an investigator for fourteen years. And then when he retired from the sheriff's office, he also took a break from our group here. He's ready to come back on, and I miss him. So what he's bringing back to our group is experience. He's had those fourteen years without him. Other rest of our group, we don't even add up to the amount of years that he's been doing investigations. So I propose that we bring him back on, if you guys are okay with that.
You know, before he's a deputy, does he have to have any kind of certification to do this?
It's a good question, so.
Does he have it already, I'm assuming?
Yeah, so there are. They have to have experience, but they don't have to have a current role. So I'm happy to keep him on as long as he keeps his skills up, and we can assess that year over year. But the examiner handbook I read through, they said have experience of emergency services of some sort. Or medical services, so a nurse could do it as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, well, she has what he needs.
Yeah.
Sort of like a year's picture.
Now, he's done it long enough. So.
Yeah, I, I see no problem with that.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
I think we probably do.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Should we put it on the agenda for?
I think we better, it's now.
Well, let's say discussion, action. Oh, that's just for budget, though. Okay, yeah, we better put it on the budget for next week.
I will need a, on the agenda to send to the state medical examiner office.
Okay, so what would his title be then?
Medical examiner investigator. Which is the same title which I've before.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, and then with him, there'll be four in our group.
Who's all in the group?
So I'm the medical examiner, so the doctor of the group that, of course, he has everything, and I do investigations as well. And then when I'm not available, then we have Brittany Peters, nurse practitioner, who works at the clinic with me. And then we have John Missin, who's been volunteer EMS at Remnick for, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but you're probably the official signer for all the paperwork.
Yes, I am.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All good, all right. My second was budget, so we ran, went around to six of the surrounding counties to compare the budgets to see if we're on track to everyone else. And I can imagine there's varying degrees of organization between each of the counties. But happily, for the most part, we are in line with what they're doing. There's three things that I want to propose. First one currently with our budget for any investigator that goes to the scene. The contract is we get a hundred dollars if it's less than an hour of time, which is rare. Or two hundred dollars for anything that's greater than an hour. I propose that if there's a case that lasts greater than four hours, that we have an additional compensation for that. I haven't, I don't expect it to happen often, it'll be rare, probably once a year. That it would last more than four hours, it'd be if there's a large car accident and the state investigators need to get involved, or if the body is in a different location than where the death had occurred. Body get moved. Or if it's a rare kind of accidental death, so. An airplane that crashed, or a fire where it's not able to identify, things like that. So I'm proposing that if a investigation takes us greater than four hours, that we get paid additional thirty dollars an hour per hour greater than four.
Seems rather reasonable.
That seems real, yeah.
And that number I got is compared to the other counties. I'd say on a typical case, it takes us about two and a half to three hours. Second proposal is regarding when an autopsy needs to be done. This happens about seven times a year, we send.
Thanks so much.
Send a body to the state office in Ankeny to do the autopsy. One is the body bags we use, and so we go about through seven body bags a year. I think that is in the budget already, but just for awareness, that would be about, about a hundred dollars a piece, so about seven hundred dollars a year that we spend on body bags. The second thing is transporting the body to Ankeny. So the way we do it is we contact a funeral home. If we do, if we are able to contact the family and get their preference, we will use that preferred funeral home. But if not, it's usually the closest or whoever's available, that sends them, that takes them down to Ankeny. There is one funeral home group who is not asking for reimbursement for those, and the other groups are, and they're asking three hundred and seventy dollars for that trip down. The trip up is charged to the family, but the trip down is not. Cassoot County pays four hundred dollars for that trip down. Webster County pays three hundred dollars for that trip down. So I think that three hundred and seventy that were being, was asked from the other funeral groups is reasonable. So I think that's already in the budget, but for awareness.
Okay.
If that organ army does decide to start charging, then that'll be additional expenses that we don't have, have had for the last few years. And then the third request is for transient people who die in our county, who are not citizens of our county. So these are people who are living in their car, maybe chasing a girl across the country and driving across, and they die in our county for some reason. Or those who are homeless and we are not able to figure out who they are or where. We had a case last year where we ended up finding a family in California, but it was a lot of work to do so. So if they're, if they're in our, in our county, then there are resources available for cremation for those individuals, but if not, there's currently no no place to get the funds for it, so currently either the funeral home has to do a pro bono, or we'll get the bill for it. By default, those individuals are cremated, and it's about two thousand dollars for that cremation. So I expect this to happen maybe every three or four years, it's not often, but I propose that we have in our budget money set aside for that two thousand dollar cremation every few years.
Question. Now, the state doesn't, how does the state handle that? I mean, is it by county, by county, or I would think that would be a state issue?
It's by county, by county, so these are cases that I'm not always sending to autopsy. There could be a natural death that's explainable, and I don't have to do so, so the county, third state wouldn't. I mean, I, obviously, we report everything to them, but they're not involved in the actual investigation or the cremation. Okay, so it is on a county to county basis.
But typically, it goes to the county of residence.
Yes. So. Sorry, if it's a, someone that we can identify, then it goes to the family.
Goes to the families.
And if it's not, then it's the county of death is where, who has to do the investigation and takes care of it.
Be like a John Doe, because you have a, you probably have an identity, but you don't know where they came from. Is that what you're saying?
Either way, either we can't identify them, they don't have any, well, if that was the case, I would send them to the autopsy. So it would be a case where we are, can't find family to contact. So like the other individual, I'd give an example. We ended up putting his, the funeral home did their little thing online, and then we were able to find a cousin who contacted the sister who contacted the dad, who was the next of kin. So. It just worked out, you know, sometimes they, all they have is a driver license and a car full of empty alcohol bottles.
Yeah.
And this is all put in the budget? Is that in the, in the budget now, Trish, what you're proposing?
Never.
Okay, so we just need to update his budget then?
What is it? I'm, all I'm getting thus far is that we, you never know, but so often the two thousand dollars for a cremation, if you can't find anyone.
Right, I'd assume.
Every three or four years.
Forget it. It has not happened since that was started.
What, what do the surrounding counties do?
They don't have a listen.
They don't? Would we end up getting the surrounding counties people who, like, that happens in Webster, so they'll just bring them up here and say, you guys take care of it? Well, that's my concerns.
Yeah, fairly concerned, but.
All of a sudden, like, oh, well, we don't have any funds for us, take him over to Humboldt.
Yeah, we could put a clause that if they die in the county, that someone will do, that we're not responsible for.
Somebody who passes, I mean, that'd be like.
Moving the body.
Yeah, but that's, but that's what they're gonna say, let's just add them up to Humboldt, and they got funds to take care of people that, well, they don't. When it's not equally around the state. That's why I thought, man, this would be a state issue. When they're not residents, you don't even know where they come from.
Yeah, like Sandy said, that seems like musical chairs with a body. That doesn't sound right, and it's stated that it's just this weird one-off instance that you can't contact someone. No next of kin, just don't know where they're, where they're at. Then it is, goes back to the county that cremated them, so I can't imagine, well.
Well, we definitely, if, if that's a worry, we'd want to put it only for residents.
Only.
Only, only if somebody dies in Humboldt.
Yes, it can't be hauling them in from other parts of the country. That's it, yeah.
I never would have thought of that.
I know, I mean, no, no, I get it, I get it, Rick, but I mean, yeah.
You know, because they could say, well, I think he came from home. Yeah, that's, that's my concern. All of a sudden, we're, we're getting all the.
Yeah, so if there was a resident of Humboldt County who died in a different county.
We get them anyway.
Then it's the, the county of death that the investigation is underneath. So they would come back for funeral services if it's requested by the family, but there's no family.
Don't we have, don't we have the present time, get bills from other counties? Trish?
Yes.
When someone dies, somebody from Humboldt dies out of, out of county. They come back to Humboldt for reimbursement. For what they did down in Southern Iowa, or whatever, because we're the county of residents.
The county, the county asks for reimbursement.
I know, it seems like we're talking a long time about something that rarely happens.
Yeah, well, this also goes back to if there's no family.
Yes.
Otherwise, it always firstly goes back to the family.
Family.
No matter where they.
The next of kin.
Yeah, wherever they pass away.
Yep.
So the search will still for the family will still happen?
Absolutely, that's, that's one of the top, I mean, identifying the cause of death, and then next of kin is the next priority in our group.
So are you essentially just asking for maybe a amount of money in the budget or line item to put it in? For the very occasional cremation where none of this does happen?
Correct.
And then also for the extra four hours, thirty dollars.
Well, yeah, that, that we are.
Those would be the two additions to what you want in your budget. Everything else you already have budgeted.
Yep, and then I was, the third part was the, the autopsies, which was, it's in our.
The trip.
We have a line in our budget already, but awareness that we may need to pay out more than.
In the past.
Doesn't sound like anything huge.
Yeah, I, I, I know, you're setting precedents out.
Well, I think.
I don't know how the other counties around do it.
I think it's fair to put a stipulation on this cremation thing. That it's only, maybe it's already stated it is, but it has to be in this county. We can't, we cannot be accepting dead folks from other.
Either way, you're gonna get charged this two thousand. If you can't find somebody, no family or anything, it's gonna go against your medical examiner's budget anyway, correct? The two thousand?
So if no one, if there's no family currently, either the funeral homes are doing it and just not charging anyone.
Gotcha, okay.
Or they send me the bill.
Or they send you the bill? And then if they send you the bill that comes out of your medical examiner's budget?
Well, it hasn't happened yet, so.
He's being cruel, acting that hope it doesn't. So currently, the funeral homes are paying for it. And now what we're basically, this, we're paying the funeral homes to take care of it.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to for the overtime or the?
Well, again, to, we, that we were gonna put on next week as an official action.
Well, no, the budget was for this year.
Oh, the budget was for the.
A budget, motion, action.
But.
I, I, I'm kind of like with, maybe with the two thou, if the, I don't want.
Tell you what, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the money for the investigations upgrade. I'd like to do just a little more research into this other part, and maybe next year we'll pick it up or something. I just don't want to start doing something that the other counties aren't doing around us. To be a little more unified in what we're doing, if that's okay.
Need a second on that motion.
Should that happen, what about the trip?
The what?
The three.
I, I made a motion for that.
You made, okay, you're, okay, it's a dual.
Oh, the trip, the transport of the.
Yeah, actually, okay.
Yes, because that's not the family's choice, that's his decision to get the autopsy.
That's included in your motion, I need a second for discussion. All right, any discussion?
And you would like further information on the?
Yeah, we'll see, talk to some surrounding counties and see what they're doing for sure, so we're just.
That's great.
Did that make any sense to you, Trish?
Why don't you like me to bring him back to you?
Next year.
First of the year.
First of the year, like in December.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
When we start budgets.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Okay, any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, and officially for Kenny next week, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Paul, we appreciate you.
Okay.
Katie.
Morning. Okay, I.
You bet.
Yeah. Um, I'm with, my name's Katie Kelvin, I'm an educational specialist with Iowa Jobs for American graduates.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Jordan Marney, and I'm a student in IJAG. At Humboldt.
And then my project manager from the state for our office is here. His name is Darryl Wright. Um, just, this is a program that's been up here for a little over two years. And I've been lucky to work with it for about seventeen months. We bring real life world experiences in some capacity to the high school classroom. Right now, I'm working with ninth through twelfth graders, and we work on soft skills like communication. Building rapport, building relationships with local employers. We create individual development plans, which includes trade schools, university, the military, or heading straight to the workforce, and as part of IJAG. After the student graduates, and we follow them for a year. And keep in contact with them, see how they're doing, and if they need any assistance in filling out applications, links to jobs. Any, pretty much any option they have. So I wanted to come and tell you what we've been doing in the county. Is we've toured quite a few different places, we've gone to PPI, we've gone to high capacity, we've gone to several different places. Countryside barbecue and stuff. And developing those relationships, the kids get an idea of what a job is like. And they find out if they're interested in it, or they're not interested. We had one girl, she wants to be a nurse, a nestologist, I cannot pronounce that word, fly for me. And she was able to go to Unity Point and Fort Dodge and participate and watch five different surgeries. We have a girl, Shelby Wood, she was able to make contacts with the state police. And was able to go out during the day, you know, during the time job shadow, a state police officer. We have one girl that did a welding at PPI, a job shadow. We've had some go to bode and job shadow a teacher. So what this class does is just explores the world of employment. Sometimes they get into it and realize, oh, that's not what I thought it was gonna be like, and we can, you know, give them that little offer. One thing that we really work on is self-esteem. Networking and employment engagement. We have very good contacts with the military. Sergeant first-class Kinder. And we actually have, and Garland, we actually have two graduates this year that enlisted in the military. In total, IJAG has had four out of the school, enlisted in the military. Part of it, we raised two hundred dollars for Officer Cram's family. And when our partnership with the state police, he came and did a presentation, and then he delivered the money to the family, or could they all go to police for them to take care of? We have lots of speakers come in, we had a pharmacist from Unity Point. Physical therapy, occupational therapist from Humboldt Hospital. We had a woman, her name's Elizabeth Adams. And she's a sheep farmer and spins her own wool around here. She came in and talked about entrepreneurship. Again, we've had Trooper Gardner. He also came in and gave the kids like little sobriety test and did the whole safe. What happens if, and it gave the kids a real good idea of what's safe and not safe. He's also come and brought a vehicle that had been crashed to talk about high speed, and make sure you wear your seatbelts. And he brought this machine. I can't remember the exact same name of it, but it simulates a car accident. Um, yeah, and he brought that, so that was a good experience for the kids. We had a former student become a CNA. And he came and presented to the class like he was working at the hospital and is doing a CNA. We have a lot of support, and April's been there along the way. This week, we'll go to a conference or an activity in Des Moines called Build Your Future. And it's a statewide program that offers hands-on experiences for kids for different jobs, the state police there, the fire departments there, last year they had a aviator simulator. They had linemen stuff where they could go up the, and rappel down. And so we'll be doing that on Wednesday, and then next week, we'll be going to Le James, because we have a boy that wants to become a barber. The one that, to build your future has, I believe, five thousand students from Iowa coming, and a little over two thousand that are IJAG students. IJAG is all over Iowa, and it's continuing to grow.
Kind of catchy title.
Yeah.
And then. It's the largest hands-on career exploration event in the state. There'll be over a hundred vendors there, students actually get to weld, like, there's a welding booth where they actually get to weld something. Bricklayers are there, they actually get to lay brick and mortar down and do the things. And the equipment operators, where they can actually get in this equipment and operate them and do different tasks. So it's a chance for them to explore, not only see these things, but actually explore these things. And IJAG will, of the five thousand students there, IJAG will have twenty-four hundred students, and it's also safe.
So it's a good program. One thing that we did this year that was really fun is in the classroom, we were discussing life skills. And a lot of the kids thought they could eat for twenty-five, fifty dollars a week. So we part, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass you around, we partnered with Fairway. And they let the kids come in, get a grocery cart. Buy their necessities, or what they think they would have for a week, and. Oh, yeah, the cheapest one was like a hundred eleven dollars. But they got that real life experience, Fairway opened up a cash register and put it in training mode and rang up everybody's orders. And then we helped put everything back when we were done. I just kind of wanted to talk to you about it and just tell you like what kind of a fun, if you were aware of it. And what kind of a fun project we have going on in Humboldt for these kids. And success rate is pretty good, and I'm gonna defer to Darryl on the overall graduation rate.
So across the state, our graduation rate is ninety-eight percent. Students who participate in IJAG graduated at a rate of ninety-eight percent. And then our success rate beyond that, as Katie indicated, we our students, we follow up with our students for twelve months post-graduation to help ensure that success. And our success rate at that stage with those students who have graduated. And for us, success is participation in a two-year, four-year trade school type training. Full-time employment with a living wage or potential for a living wage or enlistment in the military. And our success rate is over ninety-six percent. The program works, when we deliver the program, it works, and it helps students figure out those next steps and gives them real-world opportunities to explore those things. And be prepared to step into life after high school.
Real fast, Jordan, put you on the spot. Jordan is one of our officers, we go through this installation of officers. And you are the vice president of fundraising. So would you care to say anything about IJAG, what you like about it, what you've gotten out of it?
It kind of showed me what I wanted to be. I've seen a lot of opportunities during IJAG, and a lot of them I liked, a lot of them I didn't. And it just shows, it just like shows you what it's like and what to expect in real life, and not.
You feel prepared.
Yeah, I feel prepared already from this class.
We did in September, Alliant in Marshalltown was having a women in energy event, and so we took some of the girls over there, you went there, and they were able to climb holes and pretend to do all this other fun stuff, and it was, it was a good time. But one of the things learning is you could walk out, get a job with Alliant when you're eighteen years old, graduate high school, and be making fifty-five thousand dollars a year. So trade school's great, military's great, two-year college is, four-year college is great, we don't push towards one thing, we push what the individual student wants. So, yeah, I just wanted to give you a brief update or introduction.
Oh, I was just gonna say, so this is, you know, obviously the trades, as you mentioned, but it could be, you give them some exposure to, you know, going to a community college and on to a four-year college, that's the path to their success is college. Then it's, it's not just trades.
It's not just trades, it's, it's any occupation, if the student identifies an occupation, we're gonna help them find the path to that.
Okay.
Our goal while they're in school is if you tell me.
Okay, our goal while they're in school is if you tell me I wanna be a nurse, excellent. I want you to explore that because maybe you don't wanna be.
Yeah, you know, you might have that in their, their head, but when they go actually see what nurses do, they hang on, don't really wanna do that.
And Jordan has been, Jo- Jordan has been accepted to do the CNA program over the summer. So she could still be in high school and making twenty bucks an hour.
So we have programs here in Humboldt, Fort Dodge, Eagle Grove, and we just signed with Iowa Central. So we're actually gonna have an extension at Iowa Central. So when a student, if a student graduates from one of our programs in. Our three programs surrounding here, uh, and then they wanna go on to Iowa Central, we'll be able to help them continue. And help ensure their success at Iowa Central. So we'll actually have a program running, an I JAG program running through Iowa Central. In all their programs. So it doesn't matter what their major is or their direction is, we'll just be supporting them along the way. We'll also be supporting students that didn't go to I JAG who may need that extra level. Um, but if they were in I JAG, then they will automatically have support from us at, at Iowa Central to help ensure that success.
What grade do you start, um, I JAG in?
So at Humboldt, we, we started with an eleven, twelve program. We actually serve students in ninth through twelve because of the size of the school. Uh, we however, we have a model for programs as young as seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, twelve. And so what we've recognized is that getting them at eleven, twelve, we can do some good, but we're often late to the game. And so what we, if we can get those younger programs in the district, we start, we keep them from getting into credit deficiencies. Then when they become juniors and seniors, they can go out and experience internship, apprenticeship, job shadows, things. So we have models for all those age groups.
I think the younger you get them, the better.
And the goal is to, you know, learn a trade or a skill or whatever it is and to stay in the area, the community, so we're able to keep.
Have you spoke with Alyssa O'Connor? She has the connections with the local businesses.
Yes, and so we've met with her. But one thing, I guess the biggest thing I like about I JAG is their motto, that kid, no matter what. You don't give up on the kid. You work with them. In whatever capacity. Yes, that's awesome.
So what's your state, I mean, is it through the state of Iowa? Is it through Iowa workforce? What is I JAG associated with?
Excellent. Great question. Uh, I JAG is a standalone, we're a standalone nonprofit organization. So we contract with school districts at their decision. And, and then ultimately what we do is we provide the program within the district. The students do receive elective credit for it. So it is, it's certified through the state, so when they're in I JAG, they're getting elective credit. They can take it. Their entire high school career if they want to, as long as they have the elective credits in their, you know, in their schedule and, and in what they need. And then again, we're there with that support piece. So we are funded three ways. The, the state does give us some money. The school district pays a small amount. In fact, we, we asked the school district to pay the least amount. Uh, so that we can be everywhere and in all cases. And then we have private donor dollars that we, we have a whole team of folks out seeking our private donor dollars. And so we are contracted with the school to provide the I JAG program. And again, students like Jordan get elective credit for being in there.
Well, that's a great program. How long has I JAG been in existence?
Since nineteen ninety-nine. We have been around since nineteen ninety-nine.
This, my, our former.
I would just interject as supportive of this. The former vocational educator, you may not know this, but in the, in the sixties. Through about two thousand and ten, our vocational programs. Had many of these things involved. We had a DECA program, distributed education. Clubs of the American that was in our business department. We had an MOC program, multi-occupational cooperative program for industrial tech. It was a work-study program, locally only, but associated with those, those, those as well. Uh, those programs basically utilize. People within the community companies, whatever. The students would have an hour of, uh, or one period a day of, uh. Instruction, usually, uh, learning and learning skills and job getting, job heating skills, all those things they're talking about. And then, uh, so that students would go out usually at one or two periods of the day. Or longer depending upon what the job was, they experienced those general things, uh, throughout that. It was very successful. We also had, we also had a ninth grade. Class, basically it was a pathway class where students came together and worked in groups. And it was totally computer-generated and controlled. And again, learning as they're saying, various things that they might use on their students.
So is it, are you a nonprofit then?
Yes.
Okay.
I JAG organization is a nonprofit and, uh, again, we're, we're a partner with the school. So our goal isn't to come in and teach welding or nursing or anything. What we wanna do is give students the soft skills to be successful. Give them the confidence to pursue those things and then connect them to the resources that are already there. You know, again, we've got businesses that wanna invest in students, we've got companies, we've got schools that wanna invest. We, we've got programs in the high school. So how do we help encourage them while giving them those, those other pieces? So we're teaching them, you know, basics of job attainment, applications, resumes, cover letters, letters of resignation. But then we're teaching them how to do their finances and budgeting, like, how do I, oh, what is buying food actually cost? What does it look like to actually get an apartment or rent a car, right? How do I do those things? And so we're giving the students those skills in the process. So hopefully, when they walk out the door. Even if they're still living in mom's basement, they're working somewhere and contributing, right? All those things. So that's our goal.
One, uh, real fast, one of the projects we're working on currently is the kids are going out and have contacted certain businesses. And they'll be doing an ad for the business for free. And they're gonna meet with the, um, I got that forms that we'll go over today, but there's a form that they kind of.
Kind of a template to follow.
Yeah, template to follow what the customer wants, what they don't want. If they want music, if they don't want music. And right now we have Filthy Phil's, seven oh six main, seven sixteen main, high capacity. What was the, oh, and, um, the VFW wants us and they're paying for, to do a radio ad. Just for Memorial Day and their company, um, and their organization, I'm sorry. And so, yeah, we've made a lot of contacts and made a lot of. Good options.
Are you in the school then Katie?
I work for I JAG, so I'm contracted. I'm in the school, my office is at the high school.
Okay, yes. And are, is it full-time there at the school? Here in Humboldt or is it, do you go to different?
I just stay primarily in Humboldt, Humboldt. Um, I have like four class periods, but then there's time for data collection and going out and meeting the. Um, different businesses and, um, working on, you know, if there's a project that we're working on, then I can bring them into the office and. We can finish that up.
We'd love to have you come visit our classroom. If you have opportunity, come visit our students and help understand what you do, your role. Those are things we wanna do is connect them even to. The civic side of things so that they know, man, what happened? How does a county run? Does it just happen? Nope.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your day.
You too.
Oh, I do. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
I have two items for the agenda today. The first is to approve the contracts and bonds for the twenty twenty-four paving projects. Uh, we awarded the project, I believe, two weeks ago. And since that time, they have gotten the necessary insurance, bonds. Um, signatures. All things. Yeah, there are certain, certain steps that we have to follow with projects that are led by the DOT, obviously. And after award, we send it to the contractor and they have. A certain num- number of days to be able to. Get their performance bonds, their insurance. They have railroad insurance that they had purchased because we crossed railroad a couple of times. Surety's, performance bonds, lawyer's signatures, things like the power of attorney.
Plus the state loves paperwork.
Yes, they do.
More you can send them, the better they like it. Well, this was just a technicality from our approval.
This is our, our formal.
From our bid letting.
From the bid letting. Yep, uh, total bid is roughly four point three million.
I see that.
For fifteen miles if they.
But you have any issues, questions, problems?
We're very happy with the bids.
It was less than what you thought, wasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, we were, we were anticipating, uh, uh, being in the realm of five point nine million.
I was gonna say pushing six.
Yeah, getting close to six.
Great, pleasant surprise. Well, if you have, are comfortable with everything, we're just making the formal approval, I would make that formal approval motion. For the contracts and bonds for the twenty twenty-four paving with, how you pronounce that? Crow, full, ready next.
I'll second that motion now. That's a bid like we've seen several years ago.
Yes, yeah, it's a good price.
Any other discussion? All favor.
The second item that I have on the agenda is to shift the. Bid letting date for the building here in Dakota City to May second from April twenty-fifth. Uh, talking to a couple of the contractors, this is to allow them the time needed to get their. Uh, bonds and, uh, bids from their squires.
Yeah, we wanna make sure we get as many concurrent business as possible.
May second.
I'll make that motion to change the, um, letting date to May second from April twenty-fifth.
I'll second it.
But I'll third it. Any other discussion? All favor. All carry, May second.
Beyond that, we've, uh, we've been busy over there in Dakota City. I don't know if you've driven by. We moved everything, uh, that was tucked in the corner. Conservation moved quite a bit that they had. Uh, they dropped the trees in the southwest corner of the lot. Our plan is to go in and grub the stumps out. We've removed the fence. That was in the area. Next step would be for us to go out there and stake the four corners where the building is proposed to be. Uh, excavate down and start packing and building up a pad, so. Yeah, that's, right now, we're, we're hauling rock. I, I shifted our, our focus from building the pad to getting our rock hauled while the weather is fit. We'll, uh. Get the pad going here between now and when the bid letting date is. So. Anything else for me?
Yeah, anything else, everything?
Everything's running smooth right now. Our, uh, our new kid's working out well over in the Hardy Shop and.
Just for the sake of argument, what time is that bid letting?
Eleven. It's just at our office. My guess is the, the bidders are just gonna drop off their bid at any point between now and May second.
And then you'll have it ready for us on the following Monday.
That's the plan. So.
Very good. All right. Thanks for all your hard work.
Sometimes it's good, it will snow on these things, cause you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
River Development, I had to put this on. Last fall, we voted for option two. As supervisors to get this done. In the meantime. They've come up with another option. This is more or less option one that they voted for down at the fairgrounds that night. They had eighty percent. Wanting option one until they found out it's gonna cost twenty million. They've cut that in half now by doing a little different. This design, I think you all got a copy of it. Uh, this was drawn up by. The guy down at the B N R. It more or less take the sediment from the back, put it over the front, in fact, heavy boulders. Like two by three by four boulders over the front of the dam, stretch it out. And, uh. Make it a rock bed, it would be ripples then. Uh, with that on the backside of it, or this on the front side of the dam or the, what I call the front. But dam will never go anywhere. We would like your blessing to. The river people would like the blessing to go ahead with this, to bring it back to the. Uh, conservation board. Uh, I have talked to Todd and he was receptive of it. I talked to Cole from the city and the city would get back involved with it. Um, so I think, uh, if we get the three entities together. I think we can get things going and. Get this put in like option one was. For about half the cost of what it was, hopefully less than half of what it originally was.
Have we explored funding opportunities for this? Cause that's the biggest problem with everything, keeping the dam, there's no funding.
The river restoration people are gonna do all the funding. They're go- they're going to do the fundraising and all we're asking for the conservation is to get grants. Show us, you know, can we get a grant over here or here or here? Tell us where they're at. Get us the application, we fill them out, we'll do the grant writing. I'm speaking as on the River Restoration Committee. But, uh, we will do all the legwork and we will raise the money. We'll go as far as we can. We could, uh, if we can get Humboldt stabilized, then we'll go to Rutland and stabilize that dam also to get some more shape in Humboldt.
My concerns, I've had a talk with the guy from Homeland Security. Option two, we can get almost a hundred percent funded by reducing the floodplain.
This would be doing the same thing with the.
Not quite.
Gates on top and, and putting larger gates in.
They'll do a minor reduction in floodplain, minor, he said. The other one is. Barely great where the reduction is a one-to-one match. So you would get the project almost totally funded. This one here is gonna take probably sixty percent from the community to fund it. That's, that's my concern. So sixty percent of twelve million is a fair bunch of money. And now like that, then it takes maintenance going forward every year. Maintenance costs. The overmire dams, ladders have to be maintained. They have to be operated. Those are my concerns, that, you know, it's a great idea, I love it. But. The funding is my issue.
Yeah, realistically.
And once you start down this road. Okay, we're all this far into it, we don't have enough funds. Where do we go for the rest of the funds, you're gonna go to the taxpayers, I'm afraid, I just see that coming down the road. And that's my concerns.
My other concern is if you do start doing this, and then like you said. You don't get the funds, and then what if the grants that are available.
Well, actually, they will not give you the grants until you have sixty percent secured, right? And with my conversation, what was the guy's name from Homeland Security, Matt or Martin?
Chris, is it Christian?
No, I got it, I should write, I got it in my file here.
Okay.
He says, don't mess around, cause these funds won't be here very long.
See, that's what I'm worried about.
He says, you've already missed one great opportunity. He says, you've messed around too long, these funds won't be here. So those are my concerns. I I I'm all in favor of keeping Lake Matomas, if we can fund it. But unfortunately, it just, there's nobody out there to do it.
Sixty percent of twelve.
You know, the deeper we've dug into this, with the D N R and stuff. Every time we turn a corner, there's more programs available in between FEMA and Homeland Security, I wish Cole had been here today, cause. He's spoken with him too, and he's willing to get back on board. Then we're saving Lake Matomas and doing it for about the same amount of money that everybody was gonna do. You know, a year ago, or whatever it was, kind of time flies. You know, when everybody, you guys voted for conservation, and we stopped at the city, because we were losing Lake Matomas. We're about the same place, but we found some extra funding and. About three million of that is new big gates. And that, and they're, uh, we'll have to come up with ten to twenty percent of that, but that's about three million of that.
Are you, are we talking the Tainer gates?
No, um, yeah, but they're what they're gonna put in overmire gates is what he wants. So you got them out, and then you just put like a six or seven foot gate on the very bottom of the dam, and the top would be covered across. And then there's a, like, it's a million two for a wall, to keep it away from the rocks, so it has a spillway for it, basically. But we're finding that, um, I think Todd can. The U S Fish and Wildlife, you were putting it for one point two. I've been told we can actually apply for one point eight now, except for it's up in about a year and a half.
Yep. See, these are my concerns, we messed around too long, the funding is gonna.
But our, our thing is. We're willing to go after all this, we got some of the poor dodging, writes all the grants before Dodge, is willing to volunteer to help us, they've done a ton before Dodge. Um, so we got some things and people in place, to see what we can put together, plus our trip to the governor's office. You know, we pushed them pretty hard and saying, you gave four point five to Lake Delhi. That wasn't destination Iowa mine, that was nothing but money from the state for a private lake. And they've kind of acknowledged, you know, once we have a plan together, they can't do anything without a plan. But once we have a plan together, we will get some money out of that too, I'm, I'm hoping we can get this down to. We have to fundraise three to four million, and we can probably save three or four million off this price and stuff we can do ourselves, and what happens. Is in that's, whatever we can say, I talked to Nate. Whatever we can, he wants to keep this up here, the numbers. Because anything that we can save goes to our contribution towards that grant, so if it's a fifty percent match. You know, all, everything that we can save would go towards our fifty percent. By the, by the, through the grants, and I've talked to some four E that might get itself, and. We'll buy some trucks, the haul, it's gonna be a thousand loads of rock. You know, we, we were prepared to buy some trucks, the haul, and we can get volunteers to drive them, and get twenty bucks an hour for that, it all adds up to several hundred thousand dollars. So it's not this all involved to this, where everybody should be happy with. Nate's proposal, I mean, he's been a lot of time on it. And so we're saving the lake, we're creating the safety, we're putting gates in, which will be part of option two. Flush it out, and hopefully. Try to flush it out and try to keep it flushed out, so this is actually a better, a better. Result, and we just want to take it to the next level to say, hey, we're here, this involves this, let us try. And we found a lot of stuff that we didn't know was available out there. But like Todd said, this, this U S Fish and Wildlife, you figure that it's. It's a thing of a year and a half left in there.
Yep, but when I talked to Louise Moll with the, with U S Fish and Wildlife, she was really gung ho and totally mobile. Fairly gung ho on option two, but she was not that receptive to the option one thing, she said, uh. Inclined the.
The length, the length of the elevation, they say the fish can't make it.
Yeah, right. Too much, she was not crazy about that.
I mean, that's what I read, like, when you read the whole thing. And that's why I asked Todd to print it, so we can all, I've read this five times, I've read through it. Cause I couldn't get my printer printed out at home, it was so big. So I, so I asked Todd to print it, because I wanted everybody to read it. You know, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
But I'm afraid it's just ain't gonna work.
Well, here's the thing though, the D N R drew this up, so. We have a lot of.
At, at your request, it's not their idea.
It's his idea, if you read about it, it says, and it's, it's mandated by the state for U S, for. Fish passing and safety, that's why he was allowed to do it, otherwise he can't just go, go. Drop some of his bike cream, it was mandated by the state to do this, and it's still in three percent grade, if he didn't think, if the fish could climb that high. Fish ladder, then wouldn't we got it? So, I mean, he's not, he's, he's spent a lot of time on it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a very expensive. My concern is too, is the, um, we've all been told that you're gonna do dredging, I don't think the, from what we've heard. The gates are not gonna suck all that dirt and islands and all of that, so there's still gonna be millions of dollars of dredging involved. And how much, I mean, how much money real, how much money realistically do you have right now?
We aren't asking for a dime, because we don't know what we're doing. I mean.
I mean, how can you ask us to approve something and give our, if you don't have any money?
We're asking for your, for time to see what we can put together.
But we don't have, we don't also want to lose the grants that are possibly available for option two either.
Well, then let's do what the D N R wants, and then let's go all the way to one, take it all the way out, see if, take it later, take it all the way out.
Why, why are you guys so adamant on one or the other? Option two is a wonderful recreational idea.
Then it's a lot.
Uh, not necessarily, and no, I don't, I don't.
So, we're gonna take those piling down the middle. And when we do, that'll be water, so you can save a lot of money if you water, and that's gonna cut a big channel through the middle, and that's gonna be open for quite a while. So that's gonna get around a lot of that sediment. Then we're cut up opening where the gates are gonna be, and we're gonna haul that sediment through there, it's gonna be packed in the bottom of the dams. So we're gonna haul a lot of that out of there to get that opened up, so now you got two channels, once you open the gates. It shouldn't wipe out that B in the middle, what, you know, what's about to come out of B. I mean, and that's according to them, that was his idea, he said, that's gonna get a lot of silt. It isn't, isn't it gonna make it perfect? No, but over time, with bigger gates, it will keep working on it. That's all we're asking.
And I realize that, but I've also talked to Jeff Mattson, who's one of the um supervisors for Delaware County, which is Madison, or Manchester, I'm sorry. They said that was the best thing they ever did, was to get that, the, the block rapids in, and it's a constant money. There's money coming in all the time in the summertime, even, even later in the year. It's just a very good way to get people into your county. And there's more and more, I mean, Lynn's County's got one, I haven't talked to him yet, um.
Black Heart County.
Yeah, thank you, Black Heart, and um, Charles City, of course, you know.
Yes.
I mean, that one's, they have River Days, and they bring in three million dollars on that, on their week, big weekend that they do this. Heck, if Humboldt could bring in a half a million, that would be awesome for Humboldt County.
Yes.
And there's just so many things, I mean, the um tourism board, uh, there's surely. She said that she is more than willing to work with our county and the other counties to make this into um advertise for it, so that, hey. Go to Charles City, come to Humboldt, go, go to, I mean, it's kind of a, you know, hey, let's come and, let's come to Iowa and do this. There are a lot of people that do the kayaking and things like that, it's kind of the new national, not national sport, but I mean, it's kind of the new.
It's a bigger deal than it was, yes.
Than it was even ten years ago. When, I think with Manchester's, it's been. I'm not, I forgot to ask Jeff how long, but I know it's been over five years that Manchester's had there's, I think it's.
And you know, we will probably have that three percent slow blood, the longest run in the state, if we do it for kayaking. We're, we're still gonna have the same thing option one, and you remember looking through that, there's kayaking right down the middle. We're building it off the number one, so you answered all our questions, plus we're saving the lake.
Well, this is a.
We deserve a chance, we deserve the chance to take this. To see, you guys are saying, where's the money, well, here's, finally, we got a program that. Should make everybody happy, save the, save the lake, you have, you have everything. Now we deserve the opportunity to go write the grants, find out what grants are available, and see what we need to fundraise.
You've, you've been wanting to do this for, what, two years now, and you haven't done it yet, and got it successful?
We can't do it without your permission.
I don't think so, I think you could do any of this that you wanted to do realistically, you could have fundraised everything, you could have been fundraising.
And then if we are told, no, we have to try to find all the people that give us the money, give the money back.
Well.
This is all. Sounds good.
Yep.
I agree with what Rick and Sandy had said, but this is all still all based on conjecture, the option two is not. Uh, you can bring up that this was voted on back in September, the blessing to the conservation board.
Leave on the, on the motion at the time, providing the funding is there.
To get to the point of.
Cause we're, we're not gonna go into option two, and.
We're not gonna go into anything.
Cost the taxpayers, payers millions of dollars, cause if it's that case, I'm gonna say rip the thing out.
Yep.
Yeah.
That is, that is fun.
This is gonna, if we get involved and help you, this is gonna cost the taxpayers less money than option two. And thus not getting involved.
That's if people get the money, and I.
Conjecture. I.
It's not conjectures.
It is.
We've done a lot of research, we've worked on this a long time.
I, I know.
You can sit up there and say, oh, the conservation boards work hard, absolutely they have.
They certainly have.
They absolutely have, and so will we.
I don't miss, I know that.
If I came to a plan, that should make everybody happy for less money, and let us go fundraise, let's go try to. See if we can get grants and fundraise.
Sixty percent, you have, to get these grants, you have to have sixty percent of that twelve million, sixty percent is seven million two hundred thousand. Are you gonna get from the taxpayers willing opportunity, how much, I mean, money, seven point?
Dollar amount, you guys agreed to, to sign up for an option two, six months ago, or whatever, eight months ago.
That's because we had assurance from Homeland Security that they're gonna pay for almost all of it.
And Homeland Security and, and FEMA is gonna, and the city gets involved, I wish Cole was here. The city's gonna get involved with the gates.
I don't trust, the city's gonna tell you.
No, because look at, that's right, because look at, we have, we have voted how much, yeah, because the city backed out.
This was paid out, literally and figuratively on this table.
Yes.
For these best options, period. And I agree with Rick, why I wouldn't trust the city.
No.
They scuttled that, and this all started.
Had this all done, we would.
I think it would have been in the, the completion phases.
Yes, it would have been.
Well, it'd be already engineered.
The city's the one that backed out, so no, I'm not gonna put the county in any more risk.
As far as the majority vote.
Yeah.
To the, from the board of supervisors.
Yep.
The blessing to the conservation board.
Yep.
We said, get us the money figure on option two. And that is what the conservation board, and you're here, and you go to all those meetings.
Yep.
That is the direction they are going.
Yep.
Correct, Todd?
Yes, that is correct.
And that is the direction we need to go, because like Rick said, we're not gonna vote on anything till we know what the dollar's on it. We don't operate under conjecture.
Right.
We have to operate under hard and fast dollars, for God's sakes, we tabled something of a medical examiner, the possibility of a two thousand dollar increase. We're very fiscally conservative, I'll give us that in this county, so. I see everything stating from past votes and discussion, which has been a humongous amount of. Personally, I've heard enough to know that I've heard enough.
Yeah.
Move forward with the numbers, which you have been. We need, we need to see the numbers, how it relates to the money from the county, which is our major task of being supervisors. So we can look at it, we can make a valid decision.
Yep.
I see nothing changing from this, and I do not discount. That people spent a great deal of time, money, and effort in your group, none of that at all, like Rick said, if it was a doable thing. And it was a hard and fast deal.
Yep.
We're not discounting it.
Then why don't you do what the D N R wants, and just take it all the way out?
Because the D N R isn't writing the check for this.
Right.
It's your, that's your cheapest option, you're gonna do it.
I can't believe that you are wanting to tear something completely out and actually harm the community. Then going for option two, I mean, I, I don't get it, it's like you, okay, if I don't get my way and get option one, then we're gonna tear it out because we're done.
People longer have a wait, and are you guys willing to change their taxes then, if they don't look at like a?
Stop the mud hole, stop the mud hole to create, and it's stopped fish patch and, and mussels and stuff that clean the water. And they said it's been a hundred years since they haven't had mussels and stuff up to Estreville, and it's getting stopped by Humboldt Rutland. So there's more to the story, you need to read into it, and make yourself educated, but it's gonna leave us a mud.
Well, I think we're educated.
Yeah, I think we've been.
I think we're getting out of hand here. When Stanik done the first report, everybody wanted option one. There was eighty percent of the people wanted to get option one, this is option one, designed by the D N R. He put a lot of time in this, got it designed, it was his suggestion to, to go this way. When we had that meeting and the Homeland Security and Harlem was over here at the dam. This is what he come up with, suggested, and. That's what we're trying to do. Uh, the river restoration people said they would raise the money, but they can't go out and ask you for money. If we don't know what they're gonna do, that's what they want, it's your blessing to just go out and try to raise the money and get this and go for this option. If you read the whole thing and look at it, it, it makes sense, uh.
Yep.
So, that's, that's my point, the city said they would back into it. Uh, help restore all of it, it's on the tourism, if you look at the tourism bor- brochure from ten years ago. It's on there, about Lake Nakoma's, come to Humboldt, Iowa, you've got harness racing, you've got. The Rutland, you've got the parks, all listed on there.
Well, this is a.
Just trying to get it back for tourism and tourism.
Well, what I wanna say is, this is a national election for a president this year. So if you guys want to do something like this, get it on the um. For uh, the bond issue then, go for the vote.
We don't wanna raise taxes, we don't wanna bond.
Well, if you're not gonna. That's what you guys, if that's what you guys wanna go for, then that's.
Get option two without getting taxpayer money.
We have, we will look at the hard math numbers and make that decision.
Okay, I'm not, we've already, is anybody here willing to make a motion, I'm not.
No, we can't, absolutely not.
Making a motion for it.
But there's no reason, there's nothing that's on, it's just, it's just information, that's.
We have the information.
Yeah.
We'll read through it.
Yep.
Uh, like I said, I've read this multiple times.
Yep.
Really not?
Yes.
They have the same information.
Yep.
There you go.
What's the conservation board thinking about that, let us try and raise money and grants, so I can talk about it on Wednesday.
Alright, let's. We're keeping some other people waiting, they're expensive.
Yes. Very expensive. Okay. So do we need to make a motion?
I don't know, can you wait a second, please?
Yeah.
Take short recess?
Real short, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to figure something out. You have to ask your dad.
But you're always.
Yes, always.
We'll go through the committee reports before we go on a slow session.
We can.
Well, let's get him done.
Alright.
His costs, despite the.
Sir, it gets here.
Send them off to my son and all too.
I can't remember that guy's name. I got him in my phone book. I'll look in the contacts.
This I J E C thing, that really sounds like a great.
It does sound like a good program.
When you go there and you go into the room during class, you're still supportive of each other.
Really?
Which is really unusual in high school.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's just, you know, they're excited when someone gets a job or learn something new or gets an award or. Really pretty cool.
Wow.
I was there when they did the grocery thing. The kids were having fun with it, but really you could see on their faces.
They'll be insidious and.
Yes.
I mean, they even made lists. One kid even like looked at Preston King on and they put his list.
Wow. Okay.
Alright, we all back?
Yep.
We're gonna go on to close session.
I'll make that motion to go into closed session.
So I could.
Excuse me.
We gotta have a roll call vote.
Yeah. Eric. Aye. Rick.
Aye.
Andy.
Aye.
Bye bye. We are in closed session. We'll shut the owl down.